Okay, so I guess you're ready for me.
I'm ready for you.
So I asked Doug to have this meeting. I just felt like there was enough information. I did not know of our possible elongated meeting that may happen with those circumstances. So, but I felt like it was important to have this. We kind of talk about the levy because I am looking at this a little bit differently than I have in the past. So I would encourage you to ask questions as we go through this. And if I'm not making sense, but I put the presentation together. Kind of for three of you, it's the first time you've gone through the levy process. So I'm gonna just please excuse my appearance that I'm treating you like you don't know what you're talking about. But so I wanted to kind of go through it. So this is what we're gonna cover in the outline. There's two different things. This is just the presentation. You have a copy of the presentation. I sent that to you last week. You also have a copy of all the spreadsheets. I gave you guys, you new folks, copies of all that so you can follow along. And so what I want to talk about is the levy process. Whether or not you're aware of the stress that's involved and the different types of funds. We kind of go through some of this fairly quickly. There's a history of the EAV at the high school. Number five is the new idea that I'm proposing. And then I put together a spreadsheet with some future projections. Then number seven is what we would approve later in the meeting if everybody's okay with what we're doing. And then there is some possible legislative impact for all of this. So we proceed. So basically the levy, the process is we have to establish the tax rates for next year. So all this work is to figure out how much money we can get for next year. So we have very little control over this. I'm gonna jump around just because I wrote it and I forget which order everything's in. But the, I'll do it this way. So there's, we're gonna talk about the different types of funds, but we have a little bit of play. And so there's a couple of different funds that we've kind of worked with recently. I look at some of the funds a little more closely that I think we could probably do some trimming on. But we have to kind of guess what our EAV is. And the EAV is basically the health of our district or the wealth of our district, I should say. And we won't know that until, or I'm sorry, until about March. So we kind of have to guess. And so we call the county. The county says, well, we think it's gonna be this. And then I've talked with some of the superintendents. I've talked with our county rep and what the multiplier and everything is. Then we kind of take that and we kind of predict sort of an educated guess of what we think our EAV is gonna be. One thing that you have to be careful about when you set your levy is that you don't set it too low. Because if you set your levy too low and you're basically basing your levy on your EAV, if the EAV comes in above that, then you are losing on tax dollars that you could possibly get. So that's why UC districts, and this one has done that in years past, have overestimated the EAV a tremendous amount. Nineteen, 26%, or whatever it is, that there's gonna be growth in the EAV. I wish I could get an answer why it was that high. Years ago, probably before 2008, we had some fairly substantial growth. Twelve, 14, 16%, but recently it hasn't grown like that. But if you don't, you know, raise or if you don't set your EAV high enough, you're gonna lose tax dollars. The other thing that comes into play here and is this last bullet point is if you increase your revenue, less your bond and interest payments, more than 5%, you have to do what's called the truth in taxation hearing. And so the truth in taxation hearing is that big, and it is specified how wide the border has to be in this notice. And it says in there that you're going, that you're increasing your taxes. That's not what it says, but that's how people read it. You're gonna increase your taxes. Last year, our truth in taxation said 9%. And in fact, the rate was nowhere near a 9% increase. Now, taxes went up, but we could talk a whole nother conversation about what makes up your taxes. All we have control of is setting the rates or the levy amount. There's only really two things that we have control over. So the idea of not having truth in taxation is of interest to me because, one, it alleviates a lot of work on my side. It also alleviates a lot of the stress that comes with a notice in the paper saying you're gonna raise your taxes an exorbitant amount. So if we can, if we can get this revenue less than 5%, we don't have to have a truth in taxation. So that's something we can, as part of this conversation. The funds, cap funds, uncapped funds. I've listed all the cap funds. These are all, they're, all the rates and everything are in there. But all of our education, operation, maintenance, transportation, working cash, special ed, lease levy, and fire safety, which is health life safety, those are all capped funds. We are maxed out on all of our cap funds. And we've been maxed out on our cap funds for a long, long time. So therefore, by law, we can't raise those without a referendum. Then there are uncapped funds. And there's basically three uncapped funds. There's TORT, bonded interest and social security or an I R F. It's Fund 50. So those are the three funds that we can levy an amount. Then the amount we levy then is dictated by what the EAV is. So the rate, depending on what the EAV is, that's how we figure out our rate.
So the levy is a dollar amount, not a percent?
This is a board meeting. I think, I don't know if we had time for public comments. So in this case, I'm, for all the uncapped, we levy a dollar amount. And in fact, when we send our levy in, everyone is represented by a dollar amount. So even though we will only capture whatever the rate is times the EAV, we still levy a dollar amount. Does that make sense? But these, if we, let's say in TORT, we levied 1.3 something million last year. We will get that exact dollar value. It doesn't matter what the EAV is. So therefore, if the EAV drops, math teacher, then the rate goes up. If the EAV goes up, then the rate will drop. So there's an inverse reaction when it comes to the uncapped funds. So the first sheet that I have in your spreadsheets is the EAV history from 2008 to present. So at the top of the presentation, it says handout. So that's when we look at the EAV. So these are all the interest, what's it called, rate-setting EAV. So if you would go to the audits and look up EAVs, they're not gonna match this. Because those also include the TIF, the EAV from the TIF. And our TIF's somewhere about 5 million or so is what that TIF is worth. So our total EAV is actually about 5 million more than this, at least as long as the TIF has been in existence. And I'm not even sure, was it in existence in 2008? It might have been.
It may have been, yeah.
Okay, so the audited, if you went to the audit and you looked at the EAV, it's gonna, it's gonna have a higher dollar value. This is the rate-setting EAV. So this is what we use to determine the rates. So if you look at that first column that says EAV, all these are the rates from the tax reports. I'm estimating, I'm guesstimating is probably better, that our EAVs are gonna go up 4%. That is from the information I've gotten from the county, from Hollekenstein, and from a couple of the superintendents, namely Smith and Freeburg, of what they think their EAV is gonna be. So that's what we're guessing it's gonna be, okay? The other important thing to, that I'll use later on is the average. So over the last 10 or so years, the average rate increase has been 1.14%. So later on, I'll use that percentage to kind of predict future, future tax rates and revenue for the district, okay? So that's generally speaking what this has said. Did I forget anything? There is some penny legislation. I did hear some more information. I don't know if anybody's heard about this. That's probably in your packet. It's not with these. It's House Bill 851. Basically, this is a property tax cap legislation that they are trying to pass through that would cap levy increases for the 18 and 19, which would be for next year and then the following year. So the latest I've heard is that, and I'll talk about this at the board meeting.
Basically have PTEL or?
It's basically a statewide PTEL, but it's just a two-year. So it's a 0% increase. Now, PTEL, you can increase your taxes by CPI, Consumer Product Price Index. So it could go up, I think it was last year was 1.3, I think. So they do, can get a little bit of an increase. This one is a flat 0%. It has passed the House. The Senate heard testimony, did not act. So now it's been put off till January. So now we have to wait till January to figure out what's going on with this. In addition, it's a tax freeze. That's part of it. But the other part is there is the homestead exemption for both senior and the regular homestead exemption. They're increasing them a fair amount. It would come out to be about $13.5 million deduction or a reduction in our levy, I'm sorry, in our EAV for this district, which I estimate would be about $160,000 of revenue loss if that would happen. Okay. Talked a little more about the cap funds, the uncapped funds. One of the conversations that I had, and I talked with our auditor about this, was what are recommended fund balances? So for all of our different funds, we had talked about this a little bit at board meetings. Like what should you keep in your fund balances? I know District 70's got over a million dollars in their working cash. We had quite a bit of money in our working cash. And that's kind of how we survived for a long time is transferring money from our working cash and we slowly reduced that. So this is, this is what I got from a couple of sources, from superintendents and also from our auditor. If you look at all your cap funds, they recommend that you try to have as large of a balance as you can in your cap funds. So the Ed Fund, Transfertation, Building the Ground, and those are basically for rainy day issues. So you can cover your expenses. You don't have to be reliant as much on the state. For the uncapped funds, it's a couple of different things. So I'll start with the bonded interest and the TORT. We had the conversation just last month or the month before about the bonded interest. You really don't need a whole lot of money left in your bonded interest fund. The county sets the levy. They'll set the levy according to what your payment schedule is for your bonded interest payments. And so they should cover. The TORT is the same thing. You don't, you don't really need a large balance in your TORT. But Fund 50, they recommend one year's worth of expenses in Fund 50. So I've used that idea going forward. And I'll show you that as we, as we move forward. But I talked a little bit about this.
So when's the ration now for the one year on the I R F?
This was mainly from the auditor. He just said for unexpected, unexpected expenses, that it's typically, they would like you to keep a one-year balance in your Fund 50.
Struggling with logic.
Well, I don't, I don't have any more info than that. All right? So this is what I'm thinking of and is the new idea. If we basically look at a base levy amount where we are going to pick a number, and I'll pick it, I figured it out, where if we levy the same exact amount over a period of time, and I think I could kind of feel comfortable predicting this over about six or seven years, that we can maintain the fund balance, but also cover expected increases in expenses. And that's for the two funds, that's both for Fund 50 and for TORT. So if we kind of figure out what our expenses are gonna be for TORT and then what our expenses are gonna be for Fund 50, which is the I R F and social security. And if we set our, or pick a base level amount and use that each year as our levy amount so that each year we won't have to come back and, you know, kind of have a somewhat contentious discussion of what the levy should be for either one. It's already established. Those other funds are fixed. The bonded interest is established by the county. It's, there really isn't a whole lot except just to kind of estimate what the EAV is gonna be. And then everything else kind of works out. But you also have to kind of embrace the idea of those fund balances, particular fund balances. So that's kind of how this all has been, come together. So the risk management plan, this is our risk management plan, the little worksheet. There's one, two lines on here that we didn't include last year. They were in the actual document. And I believe Jane put the document in the board packet. But this is all the different positions that you're allowed to charge, the percentage you're allowed to charge, what the actual salaries are, and then, you know, calculate it. I calculate that this year, this is this amount this year, is 1.321 million, a little over, is what, according to our risk management plan, that we can charge the TORT, okay? What I've done moving forward is anticipated a certain percentage increase each year for expenses, whether it's for insurance, raises, benefits, things like that. And I've used the number 3%. So to calculate future expenses, I've used the 3%. If that all makes sense. Am I making any sense? Am I losing any guys? All right, so then the next sheet, here's where we start looking at. So if you look at, this is the handout that we need to look at, the TORT levy information. The first line shows what we levied last year for TORT. Actually, it's what we actually got for TORT. It's a 1.35742, I could probably say that better, 1,357,442 dollars. So what I'm looking at is, I think if we set the base level levy to 1.45 million dollars and keep it at that, so all the way through 2026, if we want to keep a positive fund balance in Fund 80, then this would keep a positive fund balance through the year 2021 or 2022. And in this write-up, I say, one of the things we have to also consider is there's gonna be some retirement. Anytime there's a retirement, there's a reduction in the cost. So there's a chance that this could actually go through 2022. I haven't worked that out. So, and what I'm looking at is when do we actually zero out in the, in the fund balance? And what this does is that we just stick with this fund, or we just stick with this levy every year. We don't have to come back and say, these are our expenses. This is what we think. This is what our levy's gonna be. So you can see that the tax rate is flat. It's a, I forget what I put in, 0.39 cent increase on the rate. But this is using last year's, is it last year's EAV or this one? I have to look at it again. But if you look at a 3% increase in EAV, and maybe it goes up 3%, maybe it doesn't, the rate actually will drop down. So that's that chart at the bottom of the page. So again, using the same levy, if you increase the EAV by about 3% each year, the rate actually will drop down. Now, of course, if the EAV drops, instead of increases, the rate would increase. So I'm not sure if anybody has any questions.
Oh, what is it there again?
Do what?
I'll save my for you.
You've got hollow paper here. Are you gonna mess with me? All right. So Fund 50, Fund 50 is actually two different items in that fund. It's I R F and social security. So this is, this handout for Fund 50, a little more complicated handout. What I did in here is I broke this up into individual levies. We actually have two different levies in Fund 50 that we have to approve. One is an I R F levy, one is a social security levy. When I talked to the auditor, the auditor wants to make sure that we have enough money in each fund to cover the expenses. So that's one of the things that I had to do is to make sure that the fund balance covers the levy amounts. And so I R F does include our costs, our maximum costs for the ERI. Those are shown in 19 through 23. Those are pushed back two years. They, we did not pay those next year. We don't pay those until 2019. Then the social security, again, that's a pretty, fairly straight breakdown. Each one of these, again, I've increased it by 3% to kind of estimate what I think my expenses are gonna be. On the far right is the total fund balance. Now, the total fund balance is not, we did not approve it as a total fund balance. We approved these as individual levies. But that is important to look at it. If you look at the two highlighted columns, the first one is the future levy amount. So the base levy I'm looking at is 292,000. Last year, we levied 349,000. And looking at what we were levying, we were actually levying quite a bit more than we really needed. So this is where we're gonna see a fair amount of decrease in our levy amount. And is the big reason why the rate is gonna be able to, we're gonna be able to drop the rate a small amount. But then the goal of a one-year fund balance, that's that column to the right of the first one, in between the two highlighted. And if you compare the estimated cost to the fund balance, you can see that we should be able to cover this all the way through about 2023. 2023, the estimated cost is about 329,000. The fund balance is about 287,000. Next year, it kind of flip flops, but it's pretty close. If you notice on the far right column, this is based on an EAV of 274,000. The rate drops, what did I say? It drops 2.6 cents. And again, as the EAV goes up, the rate will continue to drop. So again, I don't mind getting questions.
My understanding of the recommendation of having a bunch of a balance to cover one-year expenses, that's the actual levy. They're not saying at the end of the year, you're supposed to have the next year's balance.
They are saying that. Yes. To maintain, to maintain a one-year balance is what they recommend because of unexpected payments or unexpected expenses from the social security.
So really what they're, what they're saying is have 200% of your projected expenses in your, in your, in your fund every year. Because then you pay 100% of your expenses out and you still have 100% left. Is that what you're, what you're going towards?
At some point in the year, you would, right. But then at the end of the year, this is the estimated cost. This is what the fund balance would be. So if you look over at the left-hand column here, like in 2018, where I'm estimating the cost is gonna be 235,000, 236,000. But the fund balance would be 381. And, you know, going down a couple of years, it's 301,000 for a cost, but 372,000. And you get to a certain point where it starts to eat into that balance until you get to where you're at one, one year, a little bit less than one year. The whole idea of this, and you're gonna see it in both the TORT and the Fund 50, is that you build up a little bit of a balance and then you eventually, you break that balance down. And so, I mean, we could avoid that by trying to each year estimate the exact EAV, I'm sorry, the exact cost, and then keep fluctuating what the levy amount's gonna be. But then for me, that's, that's a fair amount of stress coming in and then trying to explain why it's this and why it's this. Where if you just set it, then it's, it's good for about, like I said, what is the one? 2021, 22, this one's 2023. So you have a fair amount of time that you should not have to go back. Of course, every year you would look at it and adjust it if you need to adjust it. I've already said our enrollment's gonna increase. If we would have to increase a teacher, obviously, some of that's gonna increase.
And having the fund balance isn't a new idea. This has been going on for years.
No. It's just a difference between these. You know, the big one is, and I wish I had a better explanation of why they think that Fund 50 needs to have a one-year balance. But that's, they just said that they usually recommend a one-year balance because of unexpected expenses for that. But the others, there's no reason to carry much of a balance.
Well, in the case of the Fund 50, it's actually a reduction in the levy that you're, you're asking for.
Oh, sure.
It's going from 349, it's almost 60,000 less. Is that?
It's 2.6 cents. So it's going from 1326 to 1064. And again, if the levy remained constant, it would, it would stay at 1064.
Well, that's, that's, there's a, there's a rate. That's just the rate, not the levy.
Sure.
For 2016, I'm reading this as we levied almost 350,000, 349. And your recommendation is for us to go to 292.
Correct.
I don't think that you'll have a hard, a hard sale at any reduction on?
I'm wondering.
On, on Fund 50.
Okay.
On Fund 50.
So keep moving. Bonded interest. Bonded interest is set by the county and it's on our repayment plan. This is, there's two handouts here. The first one is this handout here. This is actually from the Stiefel. And if you look on the far right-hand side, actually, if you compare these two columns right here, this is the old levies from the old combination of the 2007, 2011 bonds. This is the new levy from the new 2017 and 2011 bonds. And as we had mentioned, when we decided to do this, this was actually gonna drop our levy a little bit. So it actually drops at 0.29 cents. Now, this is one, this is, this has been, you know, Mike's made this point through meetings that, yes, our levy will go up because of the way the 2011 bonds were structured. So they were, a lot of that money was pushed off. So if you look here, this is the 2000, this is the total. This is your 2011 bonds right here. You'll notice that that dollar value goes up a fair amount each year.
The outstanding debt service, is that what you're looking at?
Yes, for the 2011 bond. So this is the new total debt service over here. And it still goes up because we didn't do anything with the 2011 bond.
The only question I got, you sent this out at some point.
Yeah.
I've got it here. And that number is different than this number, I think.
It should be 542, 641.
Not dollars. I'm looking at the, the rate, estimating the rate. On this sheet, it's showing 0.1936. On this sheet, it's showing 0.2056 or 17.
I don't see what sheet you're looking at. Right. We've got.
Okay. I'm just saying that this document doesn't line up with it.
Okay. We'll look at it.
Okay.
And I'll do my best to explain it. So this is, this was shared with you guys, or something similar was shared with you guys when we did the refinancing of the bond. And so we talked about that by doing that, we think we're gonna save some money. It works out to be about $6,000 a year.
Can you, can you just catch me up or give me an explanation on how come the total on the debt servicing goes up so high?
The way the 2011 bonds were structured, they structured them so that there was was less payment at the front end and more at the, the back end.
I got you.
Yeah.
Six years of zero. Okay. And that's all growth?
This...
I mean, all these are...
This is, this assuming it's zero growth, correct.
So it could be a little bit better than what...
So if, again, so that's what this next sheet is.
I got it.
If you go through and assume a three percent, actually, this one, I started using that number, 1.14, which is, which I think is a very, very conservative increase in EAV, even though that's what we averaged, but we had some pretty bad years. If you look at it, this is what the reported EAV would be, this is what the new AAV would be, assuming that modest increase. It still increases, but it absolutely does not increase at the rate it did before because you assume there's a little bit of an increase in the EAV.
So with confusion on my face, say it again.
So this is, this is the rate that is set by the repayment schedule.
Got it.
Okay? This one over here is the rate if we had a 1.14% increase in EAV, which is pretty modest. So if it was, you know, the other ones I compared to three percent increase, this one I decided to go fairly conservative because there was a lot of discussion about it.
And that went back to the 1.14.
Which was the average we had since 2008. So, but you can still see if you compare, when that number on the right is what is the difference. And these are a decrease. I probably should have done it the other way and had a parentheses.
Yeah, because it looks like it's a negative.
Yeah, that's right.
Parentheses.
Like, this doesn't look good.
All right. Mike, we may be on your, your handout. So what, what do you think is different? I'm not saying it's not different.
So if you looked down at funds and interest, you're saying for 17, that the rate is going to be 0.1936, but in the corresponding documents that we just went through, it's .2056.
Okay. Hold on a second.
That's with the six points to, to increase in EAV.
Which is what he's basing, and he's not to have a taxation here.
Okay, are you, are you using this rate here?
This one.
Right. But, but you're starting with this rate?
Right.
Okay. So what rate am I looking at?
So if you look at 2017 on the far right, it's 2.056.
Right. So this is, and I should have just cut this off, they, they label theirs different. So this was, the one above the line is last year, the one right below the line is this year.
Correct.
Right. So the rate this year should be .2056.
But you're not showing that on this next sheet. Okay, but that is figured on...
Okay, hold on. That's, this is figured on, this is a two percent increase. So I don't, I don't even have that.
And here, with a two percent increase...
So this, this summary, so let me go ahead and, and do the summary, because I've got a different sheet than you guys have. So, so this should be the last sheet. I had Jane only make the one column. So take these two columns out right here. You guys have this, which is our rates from last year, and then you have what I'm recommending as the levy. Okay? That's the only two sheets you have. It should be your next sheet in, in your package. Do you see that?
The levy projections?
Yes. It should say 2017 levy projections. I've got two more columns, actually, a lot more columns than that, because I'm, I'm looking at what it would be depending on the different increases in the EAV. So the first column I have is, you don't have this, is a two percent increase, the next one is a four percent increase, which I think it's actually going to be. And then this is what I'm proposing as the EAV, as the levy for this year. And what it does...
We levy that so we don't miss out on any EAV.
Right. But what it does is it also puts us at 4.99%, that magical number, so it's under five.
And that's because you take out the bond and then...
Six point...
6.22 increase.
6.22% increase, which I don't think it's going to get anywhere near that.
And that's where it's a little bizarre, because we're saying we think it's a four, but we're not basing it on six.
Right. But if, but if I think it's four and it comes in at four and a quarter, I've just, I've just lost out on money. So, so basically what I do is I set it as high as I can. I can set it higher than that, and we've done that. Last year, I set it higher than that. We have to do the truth in taxation. You get people coming to the meeting, that it's in the paper, they get, they get all upset because, and, and it's like this says, because it would read in the paper a 6.22% increase. Well, that's not what we're doing. Okay? So it's also calculated on the revenue less the bond and interest payment. So that's how they calculate that percent.
Which is why it gets below 5%.
Uh-huh. Correct. And have the taxation.
I guess during the first four years that I was on, we always, at this time of, of the year, we always asked for 310 or we asked for 3, and we actually asked for an EAV. Now, it might have been accomplishing the same thing that once Mr. Lehman had that figure, when, for these individual funds and everything, he may have broke that down and gave that to the courthouse. But I don't know what happened to us establishing an EAV. So what you're saying right now is that you're going to establish an EAV of 280?
No.
Somewhere along the line in the last two years, we gone, we have gone from my recollection of, of asking for an, an ultra-high EAV so that we didn't leave anything on the table, and I understand that logic, but somewhere along the line, we started asking for particular dollar amounts.
Right. So this, what I just circled is actually what goes into the EAV. And when we, later in the meeting, today, in the tonight meeting, it'll have these dollar values as approval. So, so we've always, always asked for a dollar value, and it's, it's, the, the dollar value is created from the EAV for all the cap funds. For the uncapped funds, it's what we're trying to calculate. So we set the dollar value from the, the uncapped funds. The capped funds are calculated using the EAV.
Okay. My recollection for the first four years is that we had this meeting and we, we asked for 310, knowing it would come in at 260. For all the capped funds, it didn't matter because, and I don't mind that, because for the education fund, it's 1.02. So whatever we ask, it can be 500 million, it doesn't matter, because if it comes in at 263, it's 1.2%.
Right.
But...
And that's still the case, but I don't think we ever, now, he may have talked more about the EAV, and it's based on the EAV. I know I took that out of the approval, because I thought it was a little complicated, so I'm just saying we are asking for this dollar value in the approval, is how it's written. So it's, we, we haven't changed it as long as I can remember. It's always been, we've asked for a dollar amount. In fact, what we send to the county, I don't have that, what we send to the county is actually a form that has nothing but dollar amounts in it. There's nothing that talks about rates.
I, I never, I just never remembered that, and, and it, and it, it became important once we started increasing the tort fund so drastically, that, and on the uncapped funds, that that is really what you're, that is the increase. And so when we, in 2015, when we increased that fund 100%, that amount 100% from 500 to a million, that was a no kidding percent tax increase to all the, all the people. And then when we followed suit last year and we did it, another 300, and now I'm seeing where we're, we're going to ask for another 150 on that fund. That is, on those uncapped funds, those are hard numbers that it doesn't matter what the EAV comes in.
Correct.
We're going to be hitting.
And that's, actually Dennis, I think you're probably kind of emphasizing my point of trying to go to this, to where we can establish a levy amount that we can keep for a, you know, a decent amount of time, five, six, seven years, that we don't have to go through and have these huge increases like we've had in the past. So if you look at, just a quick little glance, this was our tax rate last year, 2.4158. I anticipated it's probably going to be 2.3923 if we go 4%. If it goes up to, to what we're levying, it would drop even further. And then the last sheet, because we're running out of time here, we need to probably get it in the meeting. This last sheet here, and I apologize for your vision, this is a long-term projection, keeping all of that constant. So all of the tax rates, I'm sorry, all the capped are, are set, all the uncapped are set at the two different values, Fund 50 and the tort, they're all set at the same value. The only thing that changes is bonded interest, and that changes according to what that repayment schedule. And if you look at this, and at the bottom of each of these blocks is a yearly change, you can see that there is either no change in the tax rate or a negative for most years. But still, we are going to be able to increase our, what's my call, our revenue. And this again is only based on a 1.14% increase, which I think, I think we could, I think it's safe to say that we can probably expect more than that. Maybe not every year, but sometimes. So I think what, by doing this, we can kind of do a long-term projection of keeping our rate either at what it is or even dropping, but still getting the money that we need to get.
But you're also making the assumption that our expenses each and every year are going to go up three percent?
I am, but it could go higher.
Has, has that historically been, been the case?
Uh, the last couple of years, IMRE and Social Security is yes, that they have. The ed fund expenses have gone down, because we've had some retirements and some overs, superintendent keeps yelling at the teachers about save money, save money, save money. And they've done a great job of doing it. So, I mean, that, that all depends on what we do, you know, this spring and this summer, you know, look going forward. I mean, this entire thing is guesswork. You know, we're guestimating what the EAV is going to be.
So I like, I like the amount of detail that we're putting in this. I think what, in my opinion, where I'm heading with this thing is, I'm going to say, like, I think you attempted last year, but I'm going to say that I'm okay with what I see, but I expect to review this in March. Once they get the multiplier accomplished, we need to relook at it to make sure that we're not hammering people with a, a big hit. And that's the time to do it.
We did that last year, too. We didn't change it like you wanted to, but we did. And I think every year you have to review this. You know, you have to see, are we on track or are we not on track? So the way, the way this works, we'll go through and there'll, there'll be separate approvals, it's in the board packet, but there'll be separate, separate approvals for everything. I did not put an approval in for bonded interest, because really, unless we're increasing it by a substantial amount, more than what the repayment is, or we want to reduce it by a substantial amount, which we can't now, there, there's no point in, in approving it. It's set by the county, so we really don't even need to bring it up. I don't know if anybody had any questions.
It's only substantiating the 1.50 increase in the tort fund that I need to resway to. We've raised it so much in the last two years that, and we've, we've gone from a watch to, to a healthy, so something we're doing is correct, and now we're asking for more for that. I understand your logic, looking out ahead and projecting the funds out ahead, but that still is going to end up being, I'd have to work out the percentage, but it's still going to cost 100 or 200 dollars for, for somebody in a house.
Well, actually, actually, it should cost less because our rate's going to go down, no matter what, because of the, the Fund 50 goes down substantially, we were able to reduce that. So actually, the overall tax rate's going to go down. So we're going to be able to do this, and I think, I mean, again, all I have control over is the tax rate. I don't have control over what assessments are and multipliers and things like that. So our part, I think we're being pretty good stewards of the folks' money.
And I agree on all the capped funds, your, your Fund 50 projection was $60,000 less than what we had last year, your fund, tort fund estimated increase was 150, so that's a net 90,000 increase.
But, but that's also assuming that the EAV goes up, so therefore, our rate's going to go down.
Also, we...
That's why we reviewed it in March, I just really liked it in March.
I think we need to adjourn this meeting to get to our regularly scheduled board meeting.
All right.